All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have already done the flag salute. We have all councillors present. Ethan and myself are both on shift tonight, so if there is a call, we will need to be leaving. They'll still leave us a quorum. I've asked Brenda, do you still, would you feel comfortable? All right, Brenda will lead the meeting if we have to go. So we'll go right to our approval of minutes. Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop Minutes, October 7th, 2025.
Move to approved minutes of October 7th, 2025, Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop.
I'll second that.
I got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? The city council meeting minutes, October 7th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2025, regular council meeting as presented.
A second then.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Our financial report, Mr. Hammond.
So Mrs. Barajas is not here today, so I'll answer the best that I can. Do you guys have any questions from her report? Hearing none?
Hearing none. All right, so I forgot to read a part on the intro of the meeting, so if you wish to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a comment card to request to speak and turn it into the city clerk prior to speaking. It is recommended that you seek resolution of a complaint through the appropriate city department by scheduling a meeting with a council member or city staff before bringing the matter to the city council. The time limit for presentations will be no longer than 10 minutes. And with that, we'll go right to our introductions, Public Works, Eric Ruiz.
Hey Eric, could you stand up? So Eric is a new addition to the Public Works Department. He is a Riverside graduate. He has lived in Boardman his whole life and he is a state champ. So it's very apropos. This is like soccer. And that was your senior?
Yeah.
His senior year. Yep. And I think I came to the high school right after that. I think that's when I, it was like, yep, right around there. So again, Eric's been with the city for six months. Wow, that is crazy.
It goes fast.
It really does. And really, it's, Eric has done outstanding. I mean, it's just a very good group of men that we have working for Public Works and it, yeah, great.
Did he work for the city for six months?
He has worked, yep, for six months.
In Public Works?
In Public Works, yeah.
Just now introducing him.
That is, yeah, that is. So, so part of that, there was, part of that was, he was not full-time in that. There was, how many months was that?
Ish.
Yeah.
Because of my Achilles?
Yes. Yeah. So there was, there was a little offset. But yes, I should have done this last month. I apologize. No, thank you, Eric, for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
So how many is, are in Public Works now?
There are eight.
Eight, okay.
Well, you guys are doing a good job, so keep up with it.
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right, so we'll go right to our public comment. Pre-arranged presentation, it looks like Sam Boardman Elementary is here.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Kaylin Hendricks and I am in third grade student at Sam Boardman. The following activities that are happening at our school this month. Our annual Veterans Day program will be Thursday, November 6th at 10 o'clock. All branches of the military are encouraged, encouraged to attend. We are singing songs, handing out thank you cards and honoring our veterans of the community. Our monthly Buccaneer Assembly will be Thursday, November 20th at 3 o'clock. Our annual Thanksgiving feast will be held on Tuesday, November 25th, starting at 11:00. Our attendance was, our school attendance was 92% for the month of October. Thank you.
How nervous were you? A lot. You did a very good job. Nicely done. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
He's also a part of our wrestling club.
I was just thinking, because Mayor usually makes a comment about it being very difficult to, to speak in public and they come in and do a wonderful job, but I wish we had something to give when they do. A little ribbon or like a sticker or something, if we can maybe consider that for the future.
Yeah.
And sorry, we don't, we don't have that right now.
Good job. All right, pre-arranged presentation, Urban Forms.
All right, so we have Nathan Wildfire here and he has someone with him who is with Urban Forms. That's your introduction, Nathan. That's all I got. So, or Urban Forms, really, I really don't know even how to describe it.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second. It's not rude if you need to leave. It's not rude. It's just rude for me to interrupt Mr. Hammond.
Not at all.
Thank you again.
Okay, Nathan, I'll butcher it. So you explain it.
Not a problem. Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay? Give me a thumbs up? Well, maybe?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, great. So hello, you guys have heard from me before. I'm Nathan Wildfire with the Missing Middle Housing Fund. And you brought our team on over the summer to help provide capacity and support to your housing committee, which is charged with overseeing your housing fund. And one of the first things that the housing committee discussed, and I'll, you know, point out that three of your council folk are on that committee, Richard, Brenda and Karen, hello. And what three, or what your committee decided was, they would like to bring on Urban Form, which is a zoning technology platform to help make your zoning code more accessible to anyone in your community. This can be landowners, it can be developers, it can be citizens. Navigating your zoning code, like every zoning code, is a little complicated. It is an opaque document. Anytime someone calls you up to say, what do I have to do on this piece of property? If I want to do X, Y and Z, they literally sometimes are taking hours of time from your city planners, some of whom are on the call right now. Thank you Carla and Stephanie. Or sometimes they're getting to your city clerks or your engineering department and just learning the basics of what you can and cannot do on a basic parcel in Boardman takes a tremendous amount of time. What Urban Form does is they digitize your zoning code and make it easy to navigate and learn anything there is to know about any single parcel in your community. So your building department, shout out to Glenn McIntyre on the phone, put forward some capital to actually install this software. And over the last three months, Urban Form and our team have worked diligently with your city staff, engineers, planners, and then finally, city council members, your housing committee and the public at large to implement this across your community. You are the 18th city in Oregon to have this technology up and running. And without trying to explain it anymore, I figured I'd just show you what Urban Form is for the city of Boardman. So I'm now going to share my screen. Can everybody see that okay? So this is your city, obviously, and much like Google Maps, you can scroll around or you can start typing in an address that you would want to see in the city of Boardman. And so what we're going to do is we're going to zoom in on a parcel in Boardman. Let's see, so you can start to see as you zoom in, there are different color codes. Let's click on this guy here. So this would be a commercial property. You can very quickly see things like lot size, width, depth, different rules that you might have about Florida area ratio, height, maximums, et cetera, et cetera. You can find more height details if you want. And then if you go over to the right, you can start to click on what are allowable uses. So you can see what are different uses that you can use, what is allowed, yes or versus no, public institutional, industrial, et cetera, et cetera. By the way, we still recommend, if you are planning on doing anything on a parcel in Boardman, you get in touch with the planning department. But you can start to quickly see different information about it. Anytime you want to know where the data comes from, there's always a link. So you can click on a link and it would immediately take you to the assessor's office, where that information came from, for instance, about this parcel. Wrong, wrong tab. Let's go to a different one. Let's go to the zoning information. If you are curious about information about the enterprise zone, which were like the Main Street designation or your central urban renewal district, again, you can click on the link and you can immediately be taken to the source about where you would learn about enterprise zones, much like I just did. And then one of the, one of the most fun parts, well, here, you can just keep, keep looking. You can go straight to your zoning code for different uses. It'll take you straight to the part of the code that it's relevant about. But then down here in the bottom right is sort of the most magic button. This is to download a full report. So if we click on that, you'll see that it starts downloading. Takes about five or 10 seconds. We'll say yes, let's download this report. And you can open it up and very quickly in one place, you can see everything there is to know about this lot in your city. So all you need to have is the URL, or you could just use Google and search Boardman Urban Form and it will take you to this website where you can search for free any site and parcel in the city of Boardman. So if you are going to develop your own site or you're looking to develop housing in Boardman, you can quickly get to any of that information. Importantly for tomorrow, tomorrow is our public launch day. And at 11 o'clock, we are going to do a virtual tour with the team from Urban Form over the course of about 40 minutes. So we will do a much more involved, detailed run-through of everything. The folks on your council who are participating in the housing committee have seen this. I don't know, Brenda, I called you out today, but Brenda's probably seen it like five times by now. But there's a lot of different folks that went into making this possible. I will also tell you that within the last month, Business Oregon opened up a grant program to fund infrastructure projects across Oregon. And a lot of folks, especially in Eastern and Central Oregon, had heard what your city was doing. And so the cities of Madras, Baker City and Sisters put together a joint ask to essentially replicate what you are seeing right now. So you are serving as a pilot and as a model that a lot of other cities in Oregon now want to emulate. I'll pause there because I think that's quite a lot of talking at you. And I would want, again, point out Stephanie, Glenn, Carla, Richard, Karen, Brenda are all folks who played a part in, in making this possible for the city of Boardman. I'll pause there is, because I don't actually know how much time I have, but is that about right, Brandon, in terms of timing?
I didn't get really close.
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions other than the three who are on the committee?
I do have a question. On our website, like actual city of Boardman website, is there a link to this Urban Form?
Yep.
Okay. Easy to find. You have to go to Urban Form Boardman or something.
So if you want to go, if you want to type in the direct link, you absolutely can, but on our website, it is under the planning department, the building department and Public Works. It shows up when you click on the departments, you can see it where it says Urban Forms under each department. If you go to any of their pages, it's right there. So.
Awesome.
Also, Amanda, I'm sorry, I owe you apology. Amanda has helped a ton with the coming rollout for tomorrow. So thank you, Amanda.
Nathan, one question I had is, when you said the recommendation would be to refer to the planning commission as well as, I'm assuming in case there's any potential for a discrepancy or if there's a mistake on there, how quickly would a mistake be able to be fixed if it's caught?
That's a great question and we get that one all the time. So two, two ways to answer that. Number one, there are going to be mistakes. There just always is, or maybe there's a bug or something like that. We've used the last three months to catch as many of those as possible. Your planning staff plus the development community have been poking at this for three months. Inevitably, there will be something that needs to be updated, fixed or changed. When that happens, the easiest way to deal with it is you just immediately contact Urban Form or Missing Middle Housing Fund. And as Kwong Truong from Urban Form likes to say, their founder, he's like, we can usually fix it within minutes. And then that's, that fixes permanent. Your zoning code will be updated over years. And when that happens as well, you, it's a very simple, easy coordination. You're updating your code typically through GIS or the assessor's office or just with Urban Form itself. And it's nearly instantaneous that it can be updated. And then the other thing we just always say is, you know, your, your planners are good. They're really good at what they do. This will save them time in going over the very basics with your citizens or developers, but it's always still best practice to go check in with your planners if you're hoping to do something in your city.
Any other questions? Ms. Pedger, did you have a comment?
No, you answered. I just was wanting him to say again how to get on to the, so we got that cleared out.
All right. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you. And thanks a lot to the housing committee for pushing this forward. Really, really appreciate their work.
Sounds exciting. All right, so we'll go to our next pre-arranged presentation, sanitary disposal.
Didn't want the young lady to leave. I was hoping she was going to do my presentation.
All right. Good evening. I'm Kevin Miracle. I'm the district manager for sanitary disposal. I'm here today to kind of walk everybody through the recycling changes that are in effect thanks to the Oregon statewide recycling modernization act. These updates officially began on July 1st of this year, making a major milestone in how we recycle, making it easier to understand, more consistent across communities and more effective overall. It's important to remember that July 1st wasn't the finish line. It was a starting line. This program is designed to grow and evolve over time. And while some improvements are already visible, others will roll out gradually as funding, infrastructure catches up. And you'll start to see this when we start rebranding like the depots with the new recycling that's, that's coming. I'll break down what changes and why it matters, how the new system is setting the stage for the long-term improvements in recycling for all of us. So to give you a little background, back in 2017, China, who used to take the majority of Oregon's recycling material, basically said they were done. They were done taking it. So that left the recycling program across the country scrambling. Hallers, facilities were blindsided. Suddenly we had nowhere to send a lot of the stuff that we were collecting in depots. It was, it was pretty catastrophic for us, especially in the collection business to try to figure out where to send the recycling because the recycling became a higher cost than garbage to, to collect it. So everything that's allowed as of July 1st, 2025 today has gone through some seriously rigorous, rigorous testing. We're talking about making sure that all, all of it can be sorted at the facilities and that there's a real responsible market at the end to turn it into something new. It's really important that, that, that they went through that because there's a lot of material that people just put into the bin or into the depot boxes that just won't go through the machine. So, so while this new program officially kicked off July 1st, it's really, it's really been years in the makings as it, as we built in lessons that we learned the hard way. So on August, in August of 2021, Senate Bill 582 was signed into law. Cities with populations over 4,000 will adopt a curbside recycling program in our area. Boardman, city of Umatilla, Hermiston and the urban growth boundary or urban growth area, I don't know which one you guys call it, in Umatilla and in Moro County. So what are the goals of RMA? So we moved away from wish recycling. That means you just put something in the, in the recycling. You're like, oh boy, I just hope it gets recycled. Most of the time it doesn't, which is a habit, just tossing it in the bin. The new recycle, right recycle system brings clarity and consistency statewide, helping reduce contamination and ensuring that, ensuring the recyclables reach the responsible end market. Funding has also shifted. Packaging producers, especially those making plastic and paper packaging, are now helping cover the cost of collections, outreach and transportation. That means the local rate payers no longer carry the full burden. We're seeing more consistent access to recycling services, especially in rural and underserved communities. Whether you're in Ashland, Portland or Eastern Oregon, education is improving too with clear, clear flyers, signage and digital tools helping people recycle correctly. And while the program officially began July 21st, it's just the start to some changes that will become in a full rollout as the funding flows, as the system adapts. The law is built to evolve so Oregon can continue, can continue adding new materials, responding to market shifts and improving recycling over time. I'm almost done. One of the biggest shifts under the recycling modernization act is how the system is funded. As of July 1st, plastic and paper packaging, think like grocery items, takeout, container, shipping boxes, required to help fund the system, the recycling system. This includes contributing to collection programs, public education outreach, transportation and infrastructure and supporting depot services. These producers all joined a producer responsibility organization or PRO is which it's called. It manages the contributions, ensure the funds are used to support the real recycling outcomes. This isn't just about making corporations pay. It's about creating a system-wide accountability. Everyone involved in the life of the product from design to disposal has a role to play. The producers are responsible for designing better packaging. And now they're also helping fund the system through the producer responsibility organization. Customers, that's all of us, play a huge role by making sure we're recycling right, keeping things clean, following the rules and knowing what goes where. Recyclers are the folks collecting, sorting and moving the material through the system that makes sure everything is handled safely and efficiently. And finally, the end market are the companies that take those sort of materials, give them a second life, turning them into things like steel beams and new packaging, plastic and lumber. So just to kind of end here, we, I have ordered new branding for all the recycle depots. So we should see the, we, everybody should be able to start recycling the new material December 1st. I had to, I had to get a little bit of an infrastructure in place in order to take the materials from Boardman back to our facility to reload it and then to send it to Portland to be, you know, to get, get the final product out the door. So we, we've ordered, we've ordered trucks because this is coming. We've ordered trucks. We're hoping that they're going to land Q2 of next year, which is really soon. But the, the PRO has paid for all five of our trucks, all of our carts, all of your carts, the education material, the outreach and contamination also. So, and I know that Brandon also has Lori Gordon on who is from DQ also. So, but basically what we're, what we're looking to do, we're looking to kind of get an approval for the rate that's going to be coming for curbside recycling.
Any questions?
So we can mix things.
Yes, all be commingled. Glass is the only thing that, that's going to have to be separated. So tin, aluminum, plastic, newspaper, magazines, phone books, if you have a phone book. But yeah, it's, 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 it is, you know, I know that, you know, it just seems like this is kind of getting pushed on to the communities out here, but it, I, you know, it's really time for some of the rural communities to be able to, you know, get into this program. And with what the state of Oregon has done, it's really kind of helped push this forward for everybody. So I know not everybody's, you know, going to like it, but I think the majority of people understand it's important to recycle.
Will you have a way to verify that we are not putting it in our trash bin as well?
Well, yes, we will. So we're actually going to eventually adapt the trucks with cameras. So when they dump in there, AI will actually be able to let us know what's, what's in there. So.
Then we get a new bill. We get additional bill?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you two. No, no, no addition.
Because I'm just irritated that state Oregon is charging me more money for a program that is, that's what, I mean, right now I have the option to recycle.
Right.
And but state Oregon wants to mandate recycling and now we have to charge to do this. And if we don't recycle correctly, now I think there's going to be another bill. Because if I don't do my garbage right, I get a bill or add it on to my bill. And I guess I'm the devil's advocate is state Oregon can choose what rules they want to follow. Why can't each community? And if they do choose, what's that penalty? Do you know?
That's a Lori question.
And a quick question that I had as well is AI doesn't catch everything. And so when I was glancing at some of the, the items, you know, like the clean pizza boxes, the gift wrap with non-metalized, like if there's a little bit that somebody didn't realize or didn't notice and they put it into recycle, are they going to get fined? Or if it, if they're like, well, no, it was, it was stained. I'm going to go ahead and throw it in the garbage. But then AI catches it, like, you know, that those things will also be addressed or looked at.
We don't, I, I know that we don't have a system to find anybody. And really, it's about education. It really is. So making sure that if, if AI or even if the driver catches something, that we leave a tag with the customer so they know, hey, next time, don't put this in the cart.
Yeah, because I think my line's going to be in a plastic bag. So.
Don't put it in a plastic bag.
You're not going to open that, are you?
No, don't put it in a plastic bag.
No, I don't mean put my recycling in a plastic bag, but my trash is in a plastic bag.
Oh yeah, that's, yeah, that's totally fine. Yeah. Yeah, everything in.
Hard to see what I've thrown away, maybe.
Well, that, that piece is fine. Garbage is separate. It's, it's what's coming in the, the blue cart that comes out is what we want to see. Because if you, you know, say there's plastic bags in there, they get caught in the, in the machine stars and it's, it's really a safety issue.
Okay.
So is there going to be another charge? Because I see that in my packet, there was a rate.
So it's, it's going to be for residential customers. It's going to be every other work, every other week service. It'll be $8 a month.
Okay, so I can expect your, the bill I get from sanitary disposal to have two, two bills. One for my regular household waste and one for my recyclables. Is that how that bill will work?
It's, it's billed through the city of Boardman, so. It's it's billed through the city of Boardman. So it's how, yeah.
And you don't know what it's going to look like, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't. I don't know how it's going to look on the on the invoice. Cause you, everything, I believe, is charged on.
It would just be another line item.
Maybe.
It says recycling.
Well, I know we have a an a line for if I get charged extra.
Yeah.
You know, like if I've got too much garbage in there.
And it'll be mandated in the city limits. Is that correct?
And the UGB, the urban growth boundary.
We already have a recycling program.
Yeah, and we still maintain this, correct?
Yeah, we maintain it until we go curbside. And then since we're going to do multi-family with this rollout, then that piece can. Can we still have to have the glass there?
What about, I mean, someone brought up, can we still have the recycle that like cardboard? There are some items that wouldn't necessarily fit.
So then my other question is, maybe it's already answered, is everyone will have one of these, correct? So they are going to get charged regardless.
Yes.
Okay. That's probably needs to be clear too, that they do not get an option to opt out.
They should have an option to opt out.
They should, but they.
I mean, that's that I. I'm not against recycling. I just am against somebody mandating that I have to recycle when we already have optional recycling. That's my frustration. Um, I'm not saying that I I I'm against recycling, but gosh darn it, it's.
Yeah, I'm the middle man here.
I I know you're not the that's I'm I'm frustrated with State Oregon.
I I understand.
Lori, Lori, can you answer that uh, question from Merrick Kiefer?
So the rules say the community has to provide the opportunity to recycle. No one is forcing you to recycle. Um, you can choose to recycle or not, but recycling fees for on route. Are built into garbage service rates and Boardman passed the population threshold in twenty nineteen. And has been skating by without completely meeting the state's rules. Um, RMA is paying for the majority of the expansion for system recycling. Um, but it doesn't pay for things like drivers' wages and fuel. So no one's going to force you to recycle. Kevin's not going to fine you if you choose not to recycle. Um, the choice is yours, but the community must provide the opportunity. And because of population, that includes on route recycling.
Thank you. So my next question, sorry, Richard. If, do I have the choice to not pay for city garbage?
No.
I have to pay for city garbage.
Correct. And you guys did, that happened a long time ago, correct, Karen?
Yeah, you forever. I mean, yeah.
Yep, cannot opt out.
So my my question is with him is is that, yes, we have the choice not to recycle, but we will get charged regardless.
Correct.
So again, I think that's what needs to be clear.
Fee that's, you know, I I mean, yeah, all right.
And Merrick Kiefer, I think Tony had a comment about the line item, maybe of how it would be on the bill. Yeah.
All right, Tony. I guess not.
Oh, waiting for Tony.
Yeah.
The eight dollars, that's just going to be added to our garbage. There was, is it going to be an additional? Set towards one point three percent or whatever it is, additional Boardman city fee on top of the eight dollars. Now it's like nine dollars.
No, I think it's a straight eight.
Yeah, I, yeah, we don't. The the uh, city franchise is in there though.
Oh, it is already included in that. Oh.
I guess another question, eight dollars, how long before it's not eight dollars? How long before it's ten dollars? And who sets those rates? Is it the state?
No, sanitary.
But but that probably comes from the state. This is what you, we're going to charge you. And then obviously you need to pass that cost on to us. So at any point, they could decide we're going to charge more because we want to charge more. And then you have to come here and be the bad guy again and tell us, hey, I got to charge more, but because they told me I have to.
I I and Lori can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that's going to happen. We'll base everything off CPI. Um, moving moving forward. So I mean, you you know, you figured trucks are four hundred and fifty thousand. They're buying five of them. You know, we're over six hundred thousand for carts to get delivered. All that capital is paid upfront, which really reduces the cost. So I mean, what you pay in, you know, in Portland versus what you're paying here is significantly.
I guess my question is, is how long before somebody says we need to charge more? Which you can't really just tell me that, but I guess what I'm getting at is if you're not really deciding the cost, the state at any moment could just say. You're going to charge more.
Well, we we did decide the cost when we did the performer, what it's going to cost for maintenance and drivers and wages and and all that stuff. So we did. What we do, like what we've been doing with CPI for garbage, we like to come in every year. So that way we don't have to come in like we did at that thirty seven and a half percent. That way we can just take the small, you know, CPI increases. So. That that would be, that would be what I would, I would suggest doing. That way we don't fall back into that that thirty seven and a half percent increase, which is, that's a really hard pill to swallow.
And Kevin, when does it take effect?
You took my question. You didn't have the right to speak. No, go ahead.
So the so the target is moving for us right now because the trucks are in production. So. The last I heard, we could possibly have these at the end of Q one for a Q. So like for an A, possibly an April start. And that's when, once the carts hit the curb, that's when we would start the, yeah. Yeah. And that that's assuming that the carts get here and the team's ready to go. And then also that we have, you know, the trucks. Cause even having four trucks, you still have to have a spare because they, even though.
Is this going to apply to businesses too?
It will eventually, but right now it's going to be rolled out to residential and to the multifamily. And I think as and Lori can fill you in too. But I think it's twenty seven or twenty eight where that's going to have to be adopted also.
Cause most businesses have their own cardboard only.
Right.
And so.
Revolutionary.
You would have something probably different than that because of whatever, you know, you need to put other stuff in there.
Thanks, Mr. Rockwell. Tony, I see you got your hand raised.
Yes, I'm sorry, guys. Uh, I had to figure out my microphone. But uh, yeah, on our utility bill, uh, we would. We would have that option to be able to add a separate uh, line item for recycling. Or it could be uh, combined into the the garbage, uh, the garbage fees. So it really depends on on how. You guys want to break that out, whether you want it just to be separate. For recycling, because currently we have like garbage and then we have uh miscellaneous garbage. And we can always add a recycling fee if if you wanted to.
I think uh, the council was kind of pretty much like thinking that might be something they would like. I didn't hear anybody saying negative about it. That would be a. I think we have a room. We haven't filled up the card yet.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like it to be separate because that way people can actually see what they're paying for and the state's charging them.
Right.
It's not just wrapped up in one bill.
I get a little frustrated and that's how I process it. It might not be the right way. I but i- it's like. Just, that's just the way I process it. And so uh, we can pretty much just imagine when the blue, blue container shows up that. We're now going to start having that fee. Yeah, okay.
And I process the same way. You can ask my wife. I process the same way. I I totally get it. I I really do. I do.
And from the sounds of it, Richard, next year it'll go up.
Yep, yep. So what kind of a of a advertising? Are you going to do to let the people in Boardman know what is recyclable and what we should be putting in that blue? Because. What I thought I heard you say was that don't bag your recyclables. Just throw it all in loose.
Correct.
And then, and then you'll take it to Hermiston or somewhere.
Take it to Hermiston, we'll reload it. And then it goes to a MRF. Where it gets put on a conveyor belt. And that's when they source, separate the tin, aluminum, plastic, paper, cardboard.
Okay, so you won't do that there. It will go somewhere else. So will we put cardboard in this blue can?
You absolutely can. Yes.
You mean fold it until I can cram it in there?
Well, I'll cram it too much because trucks got to be able to dump it out. But even if you do have, you know, bigger pieces or a whole bunch, you can still, you can still put that next to your cart and that'll get picked up.
Or the option.
For another fee.
No, there's no.
Yeah, so.
That's how the trash works.
Yeah, yeah, garbage is different from recycling.
Okay, so now then, when I want to put cardboard out here in my cardboard bin. I can't put cereal boxes in there because of being glossy. So can I put cereal boxes in my recycling?
Yes.
So you're going to make that part easier.
Yeah, yeah. And you you were asking about, you know, kind of the education thing. So I have ordered, I've ordered mailers. I've ordered flyers. Um, you know, I'll be, I'll be delivering some to um, to Brandon here, but they have everything that's on there that's recyclable. They have a QR code. So you click it with your phone and it tells you what, you know, what you can put in the cart, what does it go? No batteries, no plastic, but this is okay. You know, some of the similar programs, you know, that we've had is that they'll put like the information on top of the blue cart. But oh, but the problem is, is that it's ever changing and evolving. So they've decided, you know, if they do a QR code, they can change it in the background when materials change because they do as as, you know, we kind of progress through this. So.
Hey, Tony, did you have another question or comment?
So if if there was a a household that was wanting two blue bins, is that, are they going to be double charged? Or is it just going to be just the flat eight dollars plus the thirteen percent?
There's a charge for a second cart.
Okay.
We're not, sorry. Oh, no, you're good. She just meant said eight dollars plus thirteen percent. We're not charging that thirteen percent.
He said it's included.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's our processing.
City's not getting.
We are. That eight dollars is what it ends up being for the customer, correct?
I have one last question. Um, city garbage cans. Are there going to be recyclable bins by those now too? Or is everybody just dumping their garbage in there?
What?
You say like throughout the community.
You guys have community garbage cans?
Correct. No, yeah, I was hearing you saying.
But they're not going to be separated. They're just going to be in a garbage bag and just thrown away. Like, is this going to be something that, I mean, I don't know what other communities do, bigger cities, you know, do they have recyclable? Bins for city garbages or?
They have it where they have separate containers for.
Yeah, so then. And I see more in offices. I mean, there definitely are. They do that in other cities, but.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is are are we going to be doing?
This is not part of that. There's not a mandate to do that.
What are our next steps?
Uh, voting on the, what the rate is going to be. And then once I get approval for that, then as we start getting equipment, then I can get closer to the deadline and when we're actually going to roll this out.
What happens if we vote no?
Huh?
So what happens if we vote no?
You can talk to DQ and Lori.
Yeah, the way we take it on ourselves. I mean, we have to do it, whether we go through them or we do our own. It has to be done. So.
We all have choices.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the garbage business. Um. This is going to seem petty, but I do really well with a magnet on the refrigerator. So if you're purchasing stuff for homes, sometimes that's super handy.
Okay, I'll see what they have. They have a, they have a pretty big list of things that we're able to kind of order from. And, you know, I can get with Brandon too, because I think we can. We can make it so it's like individualized for the city of Boardman too. So, yeah, even though all the recycling is the same throughout, but.
So you need our approval tonight?
No, because it needs to go through an ordinance. We will do that.
Oh, we're going to do an ordinance. So that he's waiting for an approval through an ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, we would, we would need to take.
In December. Yep.
Please use right the terminology so I can follow. Thank you.
But we're not doing that tonight.
No, no.
Any other questions?
I went past my ten minutes too.
No, you didn't.
You do a great job of being the bad guy every time you come in.
No.
You've asked for money every single time.
I talked to Brandon all the time and don't ask him for money though.
It's true.
No, but thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
You bet.
Thanks all.
I'm leaving, so.
Lori, thanks for coming, watching, helping.
All right, so we have the Chamber VCD October report. Do we have anything to add or questions? Heather, is there anything special you would like to say since you're the special?
Nope, everything's in the report.
All right, thank you.
I guess I would like to add to that, that, you know, the fourth, the. Thanksgiving. Uh, dinner at the senior center, you know, the free Thanksgiving dinner will be on Thanksgiving. And so uh, you can come and attend.
And it usually is always very nice. That's every time I've ever been, it's been really nice.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Is that Norma? Okay, Norma, you are on.
I was just wondering, is the Thanksgiving dinner going to be at the senior center or at the port?
It's at the senior center.
At the senior center.
Senior, so they say senior center to this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are you guys still doing deliveries and takeout and stuff like that?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Are you guys doing like delivery and takeout of the meals or just?
No, uh. I don't.
Just just come down.
Yeah, just come down. I really don't know.
Okay, in years past, they did like little containers or whatever you said about.
I'm just.
Yeah, they have in the past, but I haven't heard. I don't know. That's us years.
Gets flyers out.
It's a no. That was probably really hard. Know the takeouts and preparing and getting all that. Well.
It wasn't hard to say no. I think that's what he's going for.
Shut in or something. She's doing those still. She's not doing like mass.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Thank you. All right, action items. Ordinance nine dash twenty twenty five and ordinance amending the Boardman Municipal Code Title Five Business Regulations.
Okay, so this is the second reading. Uh, no, no changes.
Well, so I move to approve the reading by title only, only of ordinance nine dash twenty twenty five. Amending the Board Municipal Code Title Five Business Regulations.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now you read that.
Or ordinance nine dash two zero two five, amending the Boardman Municipal Code Title Five Business Regulations.
I move to adopt ordinance nine dash twenty twenty five, amending the Board Municipal Code Title Five Business Regulations.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we move down to resolutions. Twenty six, twenty twenty five, special resident goose population control. It's something we do every year.
It has been. We have not done it since twenty three.
Oh, you didn't do it last year?
Mm-hmm. So this is again from uh, Mr. McCarty. He's requesting that they do that to, I believe it's stated in there to control the geese. Um, in there. So he's asking that.
It's that circle that's just right on the corner.
Correct. Yep.
I hear more shooting at the river than I do.
I move to approve resolution twenty six dash twenty twenty five, resolution, resolution authorizing special can, Canadian goose taking in specific areas.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Action items. Looks like we have the BCDA lease agreement. Looks like we have the B C D A lease agreement, pickleball court property lease.
So there was a request from uh, B C D A um, with McCurd to get funding for a pickleball court. Um, when B C D A approached McCurd, they, the land option was discussed and our land was mentioned, the one over on uh, Columbia and Maine. Um, and McCurd said they would proceed and they agreed to do that and give the funding to B C D A, but they wanted to have a lease agreement first. Uh, so that's what this is. This is the agreement with um, the city and B C D A of what it entails. It's, I believe, I put it as a. The fifty-year, did I do fifty? Fifty years? So fifty-year lease. Um, they're also going to, this is the land, the property that we have um, some drainage issues. Uh, we have an estimate to do that and B C D A will pay half of those. So, yep. It's a great opportunity. It's right next to the high school. I mean, it's, this is not, again, clarifying, this is not a necessarily a money-making opportunity. The B C D A was not going to go and. And charge, do anything like that. It really is trying to pull people over here, um, give them uh, something else to do pickleball and.
Well, that cleans up some property that.
Yes, yep, yep, it really does. It will be a very good looking.
Are we concerned about, so we, we talk about parking. Are we concerned with that becoming a public parking lot?
Uh, for, for the whole, the apartments there, uh, we would just have to put signage for pickleball only. That's very easily, it's private, I mean, it's our property. That we can say that. But, but the, I, I can't remember if it's eight courts. I think it was eight, six or eight. So there'll be oodles of room in there to put parking um, in that, so.
Has anybody talked about lights?
I believe that is connected to it as well. That was mentioned.
I didn't see if Hermerson had lights or not.
I can't, yes, they do, and, and Tori mentioned a very specific way they're on and it's a motion detector and. They like that, so yeah, there'll, there'll be lights there. That will shut off at a certain time, I believe. There will be park hours.
Well, uh, so it'll be fenced in, correct?
Correct.
And then along with the lights, so I don't know, I want to say at one time Hermiston's tennis courts. Um, they had timed lights or whatever, but I think if somebody wanted to come after, you had to pay. Like they had a meter on it, or I could be thinking somewhere else, but I thought it had a meter on you, you can turn it and it'd stay on for extra long time that you put in and paid for. So is that going to be something? Where it's going to be closed off and, or is it going to always be open?
The, the pickleball will always be open. It, it will be a, a public area. Um, the park hours will be set by you, by the council. So you'll define that just like it with any park that's opened here and then closes at this time.
Exciting.
Yep.
Need a motion?
I would like to state in the fact that I'm still don't like the area that it's going, and I don't like the reason behind why it's not going in a park. So I think if they don't like the sound in a park, putting it right next to an apartment complex probably isn't the best either. That's my two cents.
Well, I think, not that I don't disagree, I think one of the comments, at least for me, um, the reason why. I mean, noise is always going to be a problem, but I think in that location, noise is probably less of an issue simply because of the location right next to the railroad track and that. That railroad, that, that train goes by twenty, thirty, forty times a day and it, and I mean, and it shakes the houses. It's so loud. And so I think the thought was, is if it goes there, even if pickleball is noisy, it's not going to be as noisy as what already happens there pretty much every day. Not that I disagree with.
There's not that much difference between that and the park. So that, that's what I'm trying to say, but.
So what I need to do is I need to get a motion in a second or so we can have more discussion about the pros and cons of why we should vote or not vote for it.
So I moved to approve city manager Hammond to sign the pickleball court property lease agreement with the Boardman Community Development Association.
I'll second that.
Hey, I got a motion in a second. Now's a really good time to have our discussion on why we should vote or not vote.
Sorry.
For this pickleball court. I, I, I appreciate everybody's comments and I just want, so if anybody has any additional concerns or comments about it, I, this is the right time. You know, we had some people share. Is there any other discussion? That people would like to have or share? All right, we'll do a real call.
Counselor Baumgartner? Yes. Counselor Travis?
Yes.
Counselor Pettigrew?
Yes.
Counselor Prophet?
Yes.
Counselor Rockwell?
Yes.
Counselor Salata?
Nope.
Mayor Kiefer?
Yes.
Uh, I appreciate everyone's discussion and concerns. I really do, and that healthy discussion, I think, is very important that we can sit up here and talk and have disagreements. And uh, that difference, maybe disagreement is not the right word, difference of opinions. And uh. I think that's very healthy for us as a council, so I appreciate all that. Uh, our next action item, Columbia River Health Clinic Letter of Support.
Okay, so uh, the clinic is asking that the council sign a letter of support as they look for, they're doing a survey right now to see for future plans and they would like. Support from the city saying, hey, we're a good partner and, and yes, the city supports the clinic going and getting grants and try and find ways to expand. Um, in the city basically, which would be signed by Mayor Kiefer. Um, and if I could just again remind you, if, again, speak into the mic. As best you can, so.
So I have a question. Is this um, Columbia River Community Health? The little building over here?
The clinic.
Okay, because there's no community in there, so did they change the name? They did.
There's no community. They took it, yeah.
Mer.
That was taken off.
Still writing my checks that way.
It's actually been quite a while. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it was some discussion. Am I correct there, chief? Because I remember talking to chief about it and how the community, word community, that was some heartache for people who. Were in the process of getting that clinic and now we don't have community anymore. They still took your check.
They still take my check, written out to the wrong people, I guess.
So you, the city meets with the feller on Monday before, yeah, Monday next week.
I have met with him.
I think he is in town on Monday because I meet with him on Veterans Day.
Yes, I think he's still reaching out.
Monday, I'm supposed to meet with him.
What time? Because I lost the time.
Three to five is what.
Oh, you guys are three to five?
Three to five or three to four, something like that.
Different time?
It's only, it should only be about a forty-minute appointment and I'm right behind you, so.
So it's like three to four.
It's all, you're on Monday.
I'm on Monday.
Oh, I told him.
Do we all have appointments?
I, I've, we gave him the information and he was reaching out. So this is like a, a representative for the clinic. They've hired them just to gather information.
Yeah, so if you have input, did you get an invitation, Ethan?
No, it was an email. I didn't see an email from him, but.
Uh, it was, well, he called me and I got an email from a Patty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Patty's who called me. I can just.
I've already met with him. I guess I didn't get a telephone call.
Check your email. And see if.
I can't get into it on here.
I think there was an email sent out too.
Yeah, I think so.
I got an email.
Well, I do check all my email, but I don't remember an email from Patty.
I, I can double check.
I didn't respond to him and she called me. So. Alrighty.
Well, you're blessed.
I move to approve Mayor Kiefer to sign the letter of support for the Columbia River Health Clinic.
I'll second that. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Really, if you have any input, I didn't know everybody else was going to be talking, so I'm glad, because I had, had no idea of what I was going to say or not say so. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, we'll move right down. Do we have any public comment? Anybody that would like to have some public speaking opportunities? All right, having hearing none, we'll go right down to the police report. Uh, Chief Stoco so eloquently wrote a nice uh. Report, it's about five pages long. No, it's one page.
It's a second report to the first report, so uh, are there any questions about uh, the month of October?
Looks like arrests were down or lease interactions. I think the first one, activity.
Activity's probably up, but staffing levels are.
I was wondering about that.
Uh, so as you have less officers, you're going to have less activity reported because they're not out. Creating the activity, so uh, we're going to continue to uh, work on that. Uh, we, we've got uh. Uh, our newest officer is still in F T O uh, learning uh, how Oregon law works and, and uh, he's moving, progressing along quite well. And my guess is within the next couple of weeks, he'll be on his own. Um, and then we've got the two officers that are at the academy and they're both uh, passing their quizzes and the tests, so that's a good sign.
Yeah, any others?
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Building Department report. Anybody have some comments about the Building Department report?
I miss the old report.
Yes.
I knew you were going to have something to say.
I do.
Every time on the building.
I love the Building Department report and I miss the old one.
What do you miss about it?
That it was, it was linear.
On there, it's a second one.
Oh. Maybe I only looked at the, yeah, I only looked at the first one, I'm sorry.
Oh, is it a changed format?
Well, he's got the little summary paragraph and that's what I thought was the, oh, there's the one I like. Thank you.
So if I can just re- respond real quick to that, so the summary is for those individuals who do not attend. And they don't hear it firsthand, but they're reading it, like this is the focus. So here's, here is the data, but my focus is this. It's as if they were, you know, so they don't have to listen to the whole. That's what it is.
Do I really fill that whole big screen?
Do.
Are there any questions? You might have noticed.
No questions.
No questions. Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Lynn.
All right.
Building Department. Anybody got comments, questions? I mean, we just talked to her.
Who are you, are, which, are you on Public Works or Planning? I'm sorry.
Did I skip Public Works again? I, I didn't, I.
Now it's your turn to blush.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Drago. I did that last time too. They both, yeah, okay. All right, Carla.
I guess you are big on that screen when you come in this way. Wow, can we get a smaller screen?
Oh, we should tell you how big you look on your screen too.
I'm tiny on my screen, like, you know, this big. You're big. So you have the report, I think um, what I would really just emphasize is that we are moving into the final stages for the T S P. We've been to planning commission, we'll be in front of you guys in two weeks. Um, we're getting real close to the park's master plan. That'll be in front of the planning commission either this month or next month. Uh, we've got a lot going on, so we're juggling a little bit. Um, but it'll be in front of you at that joint meeting with the Boardman Park and Rec District. Um, to put on your calendar, that will be January thirteenth. Um, location to be determined. Um, it'll be someplace where we can get everybody in the room, probably a city hall, but um, we still need to figure that out. Uh, and then we'll be following that up with adoption of the economic opportunities analysis, which will probably. Start in front of the planning commission maybe in January and then um, adoption in front of the city council in February. At least that's kind of the tentative plan at this point in time, so. Those are the big things. Uh, the other thing is we are kicking off. Finally, the state is very close to finishing the rulemaking for the housing capacity analysis. And so we'll be in front of you probably in December to appoint a public advisory committee for that group. Um, and this will be work different than the current housing advisory committee that they're doing with Nathan and the funding. Um, so it'll be a, a different focus. It'll be up on the planning side of things relative to. Do we have enough land and if we do, great. If we don't, what do we need? Um, and I think those, those are kind of the, the big things. Happy to answer any questions. Silence.
Doesn't seem like anybody has any for you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Drago, I apologize for skipping you again.
Not a problem. So your report's there. Um, I mean, I could talk for an hour and a half and not even touch on what we're doing, so if you have any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them as best I can.
Time frame for Main Street.
To be completed?
Completed.
December, mid-December?
I know, I, I, I ask that every time, but when I talk to people in the public.
Three days is put the concrete for the sidewalks, so.
A little bit harder to do, yeah.
Um, but that's going to clear up here after tomorrow, so uh, I'm still thinking they're going to start paving probably uh, before Thanksgiving.
Is it true that there was a semi that decided that it was open?
There's been so many vehicles. Yeah, the semi did get stuck, tried to turn around, got stuck in the middle of the road, had to have a tow truck come pull it out. Um, we remedied that situation, so we've had lots of communication problems with trying to keep the businesses fully. Giving everything they deserve, right? So we moved the sign back, but we still have the sign that said business is open. Some people construe it as business is open here. Some people thought it meant they could go up the. Destroyed Main Street to find the market or whatever they wanted to deliver to. Um, so we removed the business is open sign. Um, so we just moved everything right up to the end of the, of the asphalt. Um, just the road closed at this point. Businesses behind that obviously are open.
You said paving is going to be before Thanksgiving.
The start of maybe.
Start.
Be the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay.
You're talking paving for concrete or for sidewalks?
Road, road.
So before completion, is it going to be reopened?
I'm sorry?
Before completion of the entire project, is it going to be reopened or?
Only if, only if weather stops the process. So there'll be two, there'll be two applications of asphalt, three inches each layer. We, we hope to get all six inches down and open it for good. But if weather stops us, we may have to have it just with the first three inches. It's not optimal to do that, but uh, we would try to get it open. Either way, it will be open for travel.
Just don't expect it to be open until the sixteenth of December.
Okay, like fully open.
Perfect.
They're doing curving tomorrow.
Yes.
I ju- I just ask that every time, just because that's the number one question that comes up when, when people ask and I'm like, this is what.
Possible and let you know that things don't always go according to plan, but uh, keep going forward. We, we uh, lowered the main pipeline on Oregon Trail yesterday. Over three feet, so that island will no longer be there. That big.
Yeah.
That old barrel in the middle of it is gone, so that's all, that's all.
The city works did that, right? Did city, city works do that part or?
No, no, we, we, we didn't, that, no, that was up to the.
We discovered.
It was the contractor. I just was wondering if maybe city work got guys, because I was giving kudos if they got to do that.
No. We let the contractor take care of it. It's in, it was in, it was in the.
Isn't that a problem? Oh, gotcha. So it was just a change order then? Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for everything. Are there any committee reports? And then we'll just go right into our city manager.
Yeah, the, uh, the only thing I'm going to share is uh, reiterating November twenty-fourth at six thirty at the Port of Moro, uh, you. The city has been invited to attend the. Health District's um board meeting to to offer, yeah, their monthly board meeting to offer some feedback. Um of what the community would like to see with the health district and boardmen, so very nice gesture, six thirty.
At the Port of Moro?
Port of Moro, yep, and we'll and we'll do a push notification too, I've uh talked with their C E O and we'll get. The word out and figure out how we wanna do that, cause there will be individuals who aren't able to attend and we wanna find a way that they can still. Submit their thoughts and ideas, um I went to the their meeting. Couple of weeks ago and it really was, that was so positive uh what they were looking at doing and they're just, there's a lot they're taking on right now, so.
Is there many of you guys planning on actually attending?
I put it on my calendar, I'm gonna try and go.
I put it on my calendar.
My goal is.
I'd like to go. We just have to sit away from each other and not talk to each other. Well, we just have to stay out of groups of four. We still sit by people.
And then.
For quorum.
Yeah, and then again, a reminder, we're closed next week on the thirteenth and fourteenth, P D is open. But the city hall side is closed to do the records retention and then the eighteenth, I it would really be great if everyone could attend. The.
Public hearing.
The public hearing on the eighteenth.
Is that the special meeting you mean?
Yep.
The city gonna be closed on Tuesday?
Correct.
For Veterans Day?
Yep. That's all I got.
So when we come back on the eighteenth, maybe we could all have a confirm yay or nay for the twenty fourth. So that we can like, I don't know, just plan on whether we're going or not, so we need to. We can deal with how we wanna deal with our uh quorum if we have more than four, four or more.
We're we're shouldn't be making any decisions.
Public notice.
Yes.
But I I but if if you're together, I mean, I I just want.
We will, we will make a public notice anyway, so we will notice that there is a potential of a quorum, but no decisions will be made.
Okay.
So that is how we cover.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, that was all I was getting at, cause uh. Alright, that would all be all I had, uh councillor comments? Mr. Rockwell?
So I just wanted to reiterate, um you know, we have a lot of stuff that's going on right now and um. A lot of the committees or the information that we're getting or whatever is, you know, like the housing one that I'm involved with. Um there's a lot of good stuff coming down the road, now when that happens, I don't know, you know, we don't know, but the point is is. I want people to know that we're, I mean, everybody on this council is working really hard to make boardmen better. Um and fixing or or preparing for the future, um something that is happening very, very quickly and um. Um I I like the things that I'm seeing, you know, like like earlier, you know, we don't have to necessarily agree on everything, but the point is, things are happening and. You know, it's good, I I really like seeing the positive things that are happening, even if other people don't.
I would second that. I do have a question, more or less, and I don't know where to put it, so I'm gonna put it here. Um kinda been curious and I don't know, but the schools still do the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, it's state law, they have to do it at least once a week.
Once a week?
During advisory, during advisory, they they do it, I just happened to be at the school the other day during their advisory. And they do it over the P A system or whatever and they they do it now, whether or not classrooms are doing it, I had no idea. But they do do it over the P A and they do expect everybody to participate.
I know at Sam Boardman Elementary, they they do it, they have kids come into the office and they do it over the P A system, the children do it.
And I think they probably, they used to do it daily, but I think state law says the minimum once a week.
Um so anyways, for when we have a meeting beforehand and then we have a meeting, sorry, afterwards. Does anybody care if we just do it again, I mean, it gives the children a chance to actually do it, I don't know if they do it at the school. But it kinda shows the united to the kids, hey, we are. Just just a thought that came across my mind, cause every time we do it at beginning of a special meeting, nobody's here and then, oh, we already did it.
Or we could do it at the city council meeting only, so we just. So we don't have to do it twice, um it's almost. I get it, it's kinda like a sporting event, you only do it one time on a day. Uh but if there is a time that we think it's more important, we could do it at city council and make that the one that we do. We'll just take it off of the agenda for our workshops. If we have a council meeting that follows, if we only have a workshop, then we'll have pledge of allegiance. If we have a workshop and a council meeting, then we just plan on having the pledge of allegiance at the. Council meeting, I I think that's fair.
And show kids that you don't just do it in school or whatever, it does happen out in public and so it was just a thought that came off my mind, so.
Good observation.
Any other councillor comments?
Um I did reach out to uh Mr. Ramos at the high school. With the intention of meeting with leadership and um their A S B and their class president or class council and stuff like that to talk about. Like, one, why it's important that they're here to to just discuss more about like how city government works. So they have a better understanding and maybe it'll get them to engage more and come and do the presentations with Sam, like Sam Boardman when you were. I talked to the senior class president today and told them that they are the only school that does not come. To that and they're like, why, and I'm like, because nobody comes, like, you should be here, this is a big deal, believe it or not. So anyways.
And I'm not sure why we lost uh Windy River, well, yeah, I do, but anyway, that's another story.
There's still requirements for kids to go to. Yes.
Yeah, but they won't, they come in like.
So that's, so that is another thing that I brought up, is like, hey, you don't have to just wait until you're senior, you're doing your senior presentation and get some hours in to do this. Like, like you should just come because you're a class president, don't, you know, my thing was. Even for my own kids is, I don't want you on class council or A S B if you're not going to participate and understand. Like this isn't just to write on a college resume, you should know what you're talking about, know what you're doing, so that's what I mentioned today and. Why I thought it was important for them to be involved.
I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a requirement, I think it's an option, that's one of the things that they can do towards graduation.
Any other councillor comments?
Well, your housing committee is working really hard. And um trying to come up with some good ideas, yeah, exactly, thank you. Yeah, yeah, a little bit.
No, you really are, I mean, for the for the committee members, I do, I appreciate, absolutely. Uh I'm super excited about that urban. Plan.
Urban forum.
Urban plan, forum, plan.
Urban forum is the name of the program.
Yes, that is a, I'm super excited, uh is there information I don't want on there, yeah, but it's public information. But now I could be snooping, find out how much everybody's property is worth and.
I didn't see that on there, I did log in.
It had tax stuff on there.
I don't, I don't think it says who owns it, I think it just gives you the.
Yeah, but if I know, if I know.
You can already find that on like county website.
It is.
It's all public information, so, yeah, it's ma- makes it easier, okay. Uh this man does not have any councillor comments other than thank you for everyone's service and uh have a good night, this meeting is adjourned.